Yes, Shilan Doxy.
Isaac.
Katie Kavanaugh.
Yeah.
Mary Guevara.
Here.
Melanie Lynn.
Here.
And I am present and Andy Phillips and Jamie Taylor and.
Okay, so we are reconvening at seven o'clock. We have five present with two events.
Welcome everyone to this regular meeting of the Oakmans Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the business of the school board. There are two opportunities for public comment tonight. Citizens who wish to address agenda or non-agenda items will have an opportunity at the beginning of the meeting as well as near the end of the meeting. In-person individuals who wish to address the board must complete a blue form located with the agendas near the room entrance and present it to the board secretary prior to the start of the agenda item. Virtual participants must submit their name and address in a chat message through the chat box located in Zoom's meeting controls prior to the start of the agenda item. At the appropriate point in the agenda, the board president will call upon individuals who have submitted a blue card or a chat message and that individual's microphone will be unmuted for their comments. First up tonight, we have a presentation. Superintendent Hood, I will let you introduce our guest tonight.
It is my pleasure to introduce our guest tonight. So we have. A heart safe presentation to do this evening and our health team is here. A couple of members of our health team anyways, we have Stephanie Gosha, our lead nurse and Christina Algeri as well from our health team. And someone from Heart Safe as well. I think we have the name on the agenda here. I'm just, I clicked off it. I'm trying to find it again here. Oh, here it is. Thank you. Jennifer Shea, Cornell, Cornwell Health. So if you would all mind, mind coming up and presenting and giving the board and community a little bit of background on what the Heart Safe certification is? And what that means for our students, staff and community would appreciate that. So, welcome.
Okay. Hi, I'm Jennifer Shea. I work with Corwell Health on the other side of the state and we, I help schools become heart safe, which means that they have gone through a process of preparing staff with a, a plan and a team to respond in case of a cardiac emergency on campus. In Michigan, there is no law currently that you have to have an AED on campus or that, that there is a team that responds properly. That's coming later on. I think next year there will be a requirement, but Oakmans took time, the nurses worked really hard to actually make sure that each one of your campuses has a plan, has a team, has AEDs and practices an AED drill. And in doing so, the state awards your schools a designation called the Michigan Heart Safe Designation. And so throughout the year last year, we worked on creating a plan for each one of the schools, creating a team, making sure everybody was CPR certified and up to date on how to use the AED and what to do in case of an emergency. And then we went from school to school to school in the spring and did an AED drill with every single one of those teams to make sure that they were prepared and ready. And so I helped schools all across the state become heart safe designated because it then, you know, helps people know what to do in case of the problem. But it's very rare for a whole school district to do it at once. Usually you have one school start and then once the nurses or whoever's helping through the process, figures out how to spread it out, then they'll go to all the different schools in this, in the district and Oakmans just, they did an amazing job of like getting it all done in one year, which is, is a lot of work. And it's a lot of different people they had to coordinate. And so I'm really proud of this and all the work they did to make sure that everybody's safe, that there's people that know what to do. We have fire drills that we are required to do. We have tornado drills. We have shooter drills. The last time anybody died in a school from a fire was in 1934 because there was an explosion from someone bombing the school basically. But we have kids that die every year in Michigan schools because of cardiac arrest or staff or parents that are visiting. So being prepared for that, even when it's not required is so important. And so I'm really proud of them and the work they put into, to doing this for your district, for your kids, for your staff and for your visitors. Well, thank you very much for allowing us to come and honor the work they did and letting you know about all the good stuff that's going on in your schools. Yeah. Do you have any questions?
I want to point out a couple of things. So the board of education is agreeing that we prioritize these positions, these, this health safety team position through COVID. And as our grant runs out, you're going to hear from us, making sure we prioritize having, still having a health team. In the past, we had just hourly nurses we could call on when we needed support, but we couldn't get to the deep systems building that you can see we got to with our health team. This would not have happened without full-time nurses looking at what the needs are in our buildings, coming up with what a best practice is and putting it in place. You heard from Jennifer saying this is normally done on a school by school basis because it would normally be done in the spare time of the principal to try to figure out, how do I get this heart safe certification? I'm going to try to figure it out. Call the hourly nurse. We've moved away from that. So again, so our principals can focus on the instructional leadership and our health experts can take a hold of this and say, this is what we need in place. Principals, I'm going to run that process district wide. So we have a system because it shouldn't matter what school our kid is in, they should get the same response from a health team, right? So kudos to our health team for that work. Director Martinez for your leadership with the health team and that grant. Director Lieber for looking at our AEDs and making sure that those are up to date and always have a maintenance record on those as well. And as that grant comes to expire, we're looking at what do we need to move forward so we can continue this type of work.
Thank you.
That's excellent. Up next, we have a discussion move forward regarding emergency facilities purchases. Superintendent Hood.
Yeah. So Director Lieber is here to provide an initial update on our high school bathroom repairs. I'm looking at not to exceed budget and timelines. I authorized the expenditure of funds to begin as part of our emergency clause, which is in policy thirty-three oh one. Policy thirty-three oh one is our purchasing and procurement policy, which allows the district to not competitively bid a purchase in case of an emergency. If it's not required by law, I can review the funding source to ensure compliance and must notify the board of the expenditure and rationale. So our trustees are aware that we had a leak at the high school on a Friday. No, it was a Thursday or Thursday or Friday night before a long weekend. They all ran together that weekend and Director Lieber called me that evening saying we have water literally cascading from the second to the first floor of the Oakmans High School and had remediation teams out there that evening to shut off the water and get to work with the remediation. So I viewed this as a health and safety issue in terms of number one, mitigating the water damage that was there. And then looking at, we knew some of the bathrooms were going to be down. So getting that up and fixed in as timely a manner as possible was going to be a priority. So I enacted thirty-three oh one that we would like to bring an update to you on this evening. So Director Lieber, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, you stole half of what I had written down, but I'll try to make it work. So we have a not to exceed limit. Oh. Yeah, sorry. I should know better by now. So we now have a not to exceed limit from the contractor of $605,000. As John said, we had a pipe burst. It was actually the back of a faucet. And that first cascaded down the wall and into the ceilings and water was popping out in all kinds of crazy places. I do want to make it known that GRBS, our third-party contractor that night, they called all their people from all the other buildings. People were throwing our equipment into their personal vehicles and driving over to the high school. Had they not done that, it would have been far worse, getting the water off the second story before it had a chance to leak down. Probably saved countless computers and other devices that would have surely gotten wet. It was quite the effort. Ariel Martinez was there with me too. It was kind of fun to watch, but. So we're still waiting on the insurance amount. We don't know how much they're going to cover yet. There was some damage that was from a previous incident that was never really addressed properly. We did find some mold. We had to remediate that. Was all encapsulated in the wall. So it wasn't really an environmental concern, but it was something that now that we've exposed it, we found it, we needed to deal with. The plan is to utilize a plan. We've already been working on to refurbish a couple of bathrooms in a different part of the school. So the fortunate part was we kind of already had a design worked out. We're just going to apply that design here as well. So these bathrooms will match the other ones that'll be done later and then we'll work up a plan to do the other set of bathrooms. If you know the high school, there's a whole nother set, A B wing to do later. So then everything will match. The timing kind of worked out because we already had this bathroom plan and that's going to make this process a little easier. We don't have to go through a whole design process. We kind of already have a approved design. So.
Through the twenty twenty-two bond work, we redesigned our design team and. So we were able to kind of just apply that. We already had contractors on site.
Kept our cost down too.
As well, that we're familiar with the plans and, and are going to be working on the other bathroom. So.
No shortage of contractors right now.
Yeah.
Which is helpful.
So do you have a timeline for, the work has started, correct?
The work has started. I don't have an official timeline. A lot of it depends on the availability of materials. Everyone knows this is something that needs to get done very quickly. They will certainly be hearing from me along the way and it is possible that at some point we have to make a few subtle design decisions just to make sure that we can get these done as quickly as possible. So if that happens, I'll bring that to John and we'll make a decision and we'll just keep moving forward.
The areas are totally encapsulated. So board is aware. So it's safe for students to be around and praise Director Lieber for, you know, whenever you do home improvement and you get into the project, you're like, oh, there's an issue I got to fix. So he's going until he sees an issue that doesn't need to be addressed. So we literally ripped out the walls in those bathrooms until we've got to dry, good area and are remediating then forward, which is the right way to do it for our, for our students and community. So.
Most of it is wide open. You can see from one bathroom to the other, to the staff bathroom. It's very strange, but it's all ready to get put back together now. The mold's all gone. There is some structural work, not structural to the integrity of the building, just structural to the integrity of the walls that needs to get done, but it's nothing major. It's just reconstruction now.
Do you have any questions?
Question about the funding. Is it completely covered by the twenty-two bond or is it?
So we're hoping insurance pays for a lot of this. We don't know that they'll pay for the upgrades, but they would have paid to kind of replace what was there. So it's a little bit of a TBA to be determined. Once we get the insurance, once we get the insurance money, we'll keep you posted. So we've given you a do not exceed for the whole amount, but we expect to have insurance. We already filed the insurance plan.
Most of where we had previous damages where we had new damage. So it'll be interesting to see how they deal with that.
But it'd be covered between insurance and bond money, not general, there's no general fund. Is that twenty twenty, is that twenty twenty-two bond? Yeah.
Thank you so much.
So since this is a bond expenditure, I would like to bring it for an action on the next meeting, even though I, I made the emergency decision, I do think it would be transparent for our community, for the board to take up action to approve that expenditure. It is six hundred and up to $605,000. So I think that would be a best practice that we, I'd like to have happen. Okay. You will? Yeah.
Did we, were we clear on how long this is going to take?
Is that?
Yep. Yeah, we're not because we're, we're trying to source the, some of the equipment. So yeah, we're trying to do as quickly as possible, but.
If we were doing this ourselves, which we don't want to do, we're not trained for that. We would get materials sourced directly from Home Depot places where we knew we could get exactly what we need. Trying to also improve the situation there, tried to upgrade it a little bit. That was the same plan we had. That was bit packed eight, twenty twenty-five. Was to do the same thing on the other end of the building. That was the gym auditorium bathrooms. So that will take a little more time. However, we will get better products. We will get longer lasting products. It will look nicer. It will feel nicer. Yeah. And the existing bathrooms lasted thirty years. The goal is to put bathrooms in there that will last the next thirty years and it'll be a future school board's problem and someone else's problem at that point. So we're not throwing this back together just to get it back online. Right? Right. That's usually the holdup in these projects is sourcing.
Thank you.
I do want to forecast for the board and community at our next meeting, Director Lieber will bring, be bringing back the Kennewah remediation, the environmental issues at Kennewah. We'll do a very similar type of presentation that was also an emergency authorization by me in terms of the mold that was in the building and the environmental needs. I forecasted for the board, that's some significant money as well. The board can and community could expect that to be about twice the cost of the bathrooms or less, but we're, we're sourcing right now. What exactly that estimate would be because we're looking at somewhere around forty rooms, we believe, that we're trying to just make sure our environmentally, how we want them for our students. So again, that will be bond funds. We're hoping bond funds or sinking fund, but we'll bring that back to you with a do not to exceed at the next meeting and explain why I use that emergency clause and what contractors we're using and why for that.
And just to point out for the community, the things that are being fixed and remediated at Kennewah are not a building is going to stay.
Still owe me long term?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're.
Putting a million dollars into something we're going to tear down.
So Kennewah was, the plan for Kennewah was to keep Kennewah online in the future after our new Kennewah is built for administration building, could be other, other purposes for operations, could be other purposes for technology and potentially other community or school uses. So that was always in the long range plan.
But it's not lost. That's.
It is not lost. And remember, we have six more years of kids being in those spaces to begin with. So the right thing to do, no, no issues there in terms of making sure we're remeding those areas unequivocally, the right thing to do. And Director Lieber's been very, very responsive in terms of that. And again, we're following the experts like we always have in terms of bringing in our environmental experts and following their recommendations because again, we're not the experts there. That's, that, that practice has served us very well. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. At this time in the meeting, citizens have the opportunity to address the board regarding items of interest that may or may not be a part of the evening's agenda. Citizens are required to limit their comments to three minutes, except when this, except when this requirement is waived by the board president during the meeting. A designated timekeeper will communicate to the individual who's addressing the board at three minutes. The board highly values public comment and input. However, the board meeting format is designed to facilitate the evening's agenda and therefore restricts board members from engaging in conversation with speakers or immediately responding to questions. Questions and concerns may be addressed by the board later in the agenda and may be assigned for follow-up by the board or superintendent at a later date. Do we have any blue cards? Do we have any online speakers? Okay, then we will move on. Up next, we have our high school student reports and requests. Welcome. We're so happy to see you both. Please introduce yourselves and we are excited to hear what you have to say.
I'm Herschita. I'm a junior.
I'm Xavier and I'm a senior at Oakmans High School.
Um, the topics we'll be covering today are miscellaneous items, National Honor Society and sport. For miscellaneous items, the high school is transitioning from going from two lunches to three lunches. And for, this is a big change because for B lunch, you're gonna go to your fourth hour class and then go to, and then go to lunch and then come back to your fourth hour class. And then seventh grade camp counselor applications have been posted for seniors and juniors who applied. The count conferences, parent teacher conferences just, um, just were this past week on October eleventh. That's why school was off because like teachers were working like a lot and we need to give them a break. And on the Halloween bake sale for OHS is on October thirty-first. We've had a lot of counseling office support for college application like this season, including like meetings with teachers to go over senior plans and like their essays that might help further. Or trunk or tree is October twenty-seventh, hosted by Oakmans Public Schools. And there's also something called an Oakmans Care Drive. And this is where Oakmans High School students donate like school supplies, food, clothes to restore the OHS care closet.
For National Honor Society, we had our annual bottle drive. So we're still counting the final amount of money that was made for that. But all the money that was made for that is donated to the Oakmans Food Bank. And we just wanted to thank you to all the community and participation and donations that we got from all the people in the neighborhood to be right. Yes. For sports, many people came to support the Oakmans Girls Volleyball Breast Cancer Awareness Game. So for this game, all the proceeds went to the Susan G. Homin Foundation, which is a cancer donation foundation. And the volleyball team did win against East Lansing. The Oakmans Football Team won last Friday against Coldwater. Incredible. Honestly, it's, it's amazing how.
Win.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Much more than my last three years. Yeah. So as someone who's been to a lot of those games in my past three years here, being in the marching band, it's like incredible to just get to be there and play the fight song when we get a touchdown. Only happened like once. It's like, oh, we got three this game. So they've made amazing improvements. So we also have the Youth Cycling Club, club is hosting a fun ride for bike riding, which ice creams is going to be provided there. Pretty cool. The pickleball club, they host tournaments like two times a month. They're going to be hosting a Halloween themed tournament this weekend. So people can dress up in their costumes and no experience required. The Oakmans Boys Soccer made it to a district semifinals game, which is happening today. It will happen at 5:00 PM. So hopefully they won. We love them. And the Oakmans Boys and Girls Cross Country Team won first place at the Greater Lansing Cross Country Championship this weekend, which is really good for them. They did really well.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I actually have two questions for you guys. One is, is do you guys know when our flex will come back and if there's going to be a replacement for that?
So Dr. Kemsley is working with committee to look at options for flex. So Assistant Superintendent Bailey is meeting with Dr. Kemsley and they're meeting with a group of teachers to try to come up with the approach. I don't have a timeline yet, but I know they're working on it as we speak. So we'll give you an update. Once we have it and I'll give, I'll give the state body an update. Okay.
And also do you know if the, the three lunches that we're getting is going to go long term? And they'll like continue to like. Okay.
Yes. And let me talk a little about that. What's a great question. So, so Dr. Kemsley and I, I'm doing some building walkthroughs and we assessed the cafeteria during lunch. Very, very crowded. Not a place where I would want to spend my time eating. And in him talking with students, that same assessment, I think it's way too crowded. It's actually over capacity that we feel is healthy for kids to be in. And then we noted students eating outside, great, but you notice the weather getting darker and, and cooler. And then we noticed students eating all along kind of the corridor in the hallways, which is creating also some additional sanitary issues in terms of garbage, in terms of food allergies and containment. And then in terms of safety of kids, if they're eating in the hallway and they're choking, our staff is inside and in the cafeteria, that could be a supervision issue. So we talked about ways to mitigate those concerns. And looked at past practice was we used to have three lunches in the past.
I heard about this from a class teacher. He's like, oh.
So this is not a new thing. This is actually going back to, and our building's actually bigger now. So trying to get that lunchroom down to under, what are you, what are we getting it to? Under six hundred, six hundred students? Brian, are we getting under six hundred? Yeah. Yeah. So doing so will allow students to get through lunch line more quickly and we have the three lines open now and have more time to eat and socialize in an environment that's not as noisy and less, less crowded. So we think those are all wins. The, the one concern that we're working through is that split time in classes. So I know Dr. Schmidt was very intentional with the scheduling about looking at what types of classes could best be split. So for example, if you're in a PE class and you're changing clothes, that really can't be a split class. If you're doing a science lab in the middle of a lab, if you're doing an experiment, it's really hard to go eat lunch and then come back. So there's a lot of intentionality working with department chair leaders to figure out which classes would be best for the split. And then I know they're also including students in the redesign of the cafeteria with the flexible furniture we have. So we can value that student voice in terms of what that cafeteria will look like with the flexible furniture we have to make sure there's appealing, learn eating and socializing spaces for students. So it was really more of an adult decision looking at, is this what we want for our students? Do we think it's a safe, healthy environment? I'm saying no. And then when we know better, we want to do better. So making that change as soon as we could.
Thank you.
I just want to follow up. I just for clarity, what, what happened? So what is different from last year or the year before? Do we have more students?
We have more students.
Okay.
Enrollment are up at the high school.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just thinking, what?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. And as we looked at getting the furniture to accommodate them, if you've walked into the cafeteria, it's packed with furniture. This doesn't feel like a environment that a lot of our students felt really good about being in. So we wanted to make that, that change.
Yes. Has there been any thought? I haven't heard about like the overcrowding at the middle school, similar to the high school, but I have heard at least last year, and I'm not quite sure if it's continuing this year, the long lines. And so I'm just curious if there's been any consideration for a similar assessment at the middle school and the lunch, particularly with more students eating the free lunch, since everyone is eligible. So any thought on that?
So that will, that assessment is ongoing. Absolutely. We're looking at the middle schools as well. And what we're seeing there is numbers have been a little more stable at the middle schools. We're kind of staying similar in those in terms of numbers, but it's the free lunch for everyone. That's really, that's really impacting. So, so we're looking at options. I can tell you seven, eight, six, seven, eight used to have three lunches as well and a split lunch as well at six, seven, eight. So I'm not saying that's what we'll do there, but we are assessing that actively as well.
If you could just keep us informed and the community informed. Personal interests. But I know, again, I know there's others and there's students who bring their lunch. I know not all students have that opportunity, but they shouldn't have to because they don't want to stand in line and then lunch is over. Right? So.
And I'll be happy to grab some information. I'm sure Director Kramkamp can get some information on lunch lines too, and we'll be happy to talk with middle schools about the current status of that.
Yeah. And I can tell you, there's plenty of kids that aren't getting the free lunch because they don't actually get to eat at all. I know. And then they're, if they're able to bring a lunch, they do, but some aren't, or some don't have the time or capacity. And then they're not eating anything or they're sharing or it's.
Drown out their food.
Or they're never making it through the lunch. Or they do, and then they have to go, you know, and it's just, it's, it's an ongoing problem, but definitely made work by the free lunch, I'm sure, because we have more students wanting what they're eligible to get.
So I would say the reason we started the high school is the most obvious for us in terms of impact on students, bigger bodies, more students. And then working with Brian and Brian will, will look at our middle schools and elementaries and see if there's things we can, opportunities there as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. Back to the high school. Is the amount, the number of minutes a student has for lunch remain unchanged?
It does.
Okay. So that's, that hasn't changed. It's, it's the time for some students.
Yes.
And then kind of Herschita's question about whether this is envisioned as a multi-year model. Because I know there's some classes I can see being particularly challenging to split in the middle, but I would say that no class is great when you cut it in half. So I'm just wondering if there's energy being put, speaking about something being more student centered as we go forward.
Let me understand more about students.
Well, just not having to interrupt the middle of a class to go to lunch.
So I don't know if there's a model where we can fit three thirty-five minute lunches in to the, to the school day and not have a lunch occur too early in the day, because it's been searched to arrive or leaving late in the day, which is why it's lunch in the, in the original scheduling, but we can certainly look at that and, and see if there's other models to do.
I had a split, split lunch. I, I grew up.
But, but to touch it up at this point, we're also looking at making sure it's not the same classes that are impacted every year too. If we do need to keep this model, is there a rotation of classes we can do? So it's not the same. If we do need to keep this model, is there a rotation of classes we can do? So it's not the same um, students or classes that are getting that because it isn't ideal for instruction. Yeah. Argument that it is ideal. Yeah. Yeah. You took a fair point.
Well, thank you so much for your reports.
Yes.
You are welcome.
Love the questions back. Yeah.
You're welcome to say or go about your evening, whichever you like. Thank you.
I know.
Okay, uh, we are now to your reports and requests.
All right. So, uh, we continue to work with our community ad department uh, to look at our, uh, childcare. Uh, and we're evaluating, evaluating the budget and programming there. Um, again, our idea for our community programs is they at least break even or, and are profitable. And you know, post COVID, uh, we had some grants during COVID to offset some of the, the losses in childcare from enrollments being down in childcare and then those enrollments haven't bumped back up over time. So to date, uh, our community ad has raised our rates to be more competitive. So we're looking at our rates and private childcare rates, we've raised rates. And we've also raised those ratios, uh, in our programs to match, um, the state levels of what childcare ratios are allowed. Um, we still have some lower enrollment, so we're investigating that, especially at our before and after care, um, programs. That those programs typically brought in enough money to offset the costs of other programs that we run. Um, and we're looking at evaluating that to make sure that, um, our parents are aware, our community is aware of those offerings and that we can, um, again, have that, uh, be profitable. Uh, the other, um, issue we're looking at is our, the sports and recreation side of community ed. And that being, we see an underutilized, um, uh, revenue enhancement, uh, for the district that we think we could do better in terms of, um, some reorganization, increasing revenues with additional offerings for our community, and also providing better programming, uh, in terms of community events uh, and recreational sports. So, um, we think there will be some exciting news to share there in terms of some potential revenues back uh, in the future as we build that out. So we'll provide an update to the board, uh, here this fall, once we have final reorganization decisions being made. And kind of just forecasting that again for the, for the board and, and community in terms of some behind the scenes, uh, reorganization work that we're doing. In terms of telling our story, we are proud to announce in October twenty ninth, we will have a security presentation, uh, community forum uh, at Kenwa at seven o'clock in the evening to, um, talk about our approach to school safety and security. Uh, so we'll have our partners from, uh, SEC here, Jason Russell and our director Katie Deal, along with trustee Kavanaugh, uh, and myself, uh, prevent presenting an overview, telling that story of how and why we're approaching safety and security the way we are in the district. Uh, we've spent our grant funds, um, and not just on hardening our schools, but on um, developing systems and having people in place and doing that proactive um, measure as well. So we don't have to just be stuck in reactive. So a big piece of that will also be our, um, culture and community and behavioral threat assessment, um, that we are very proud of that work. So we're going to be sharing that right after our M A S B presentation the Friday before. Um, so thank you to trustee Kavanaugh and our team for putting that together. Um, uh, high school graduation, Dr. Kemsley, um, has also assessed our graduation coming up in the spring. And in meeting with, uh, AD Hints noted again, a number of Saturday events where uh, student athletes would have to miss graduation for scheduled regional competitions that our students would be in uh, on that Saturday. Uh, when we met with the board about graduation dates, we were trying to get graduation on that Sunday uh, of that weekend. And getting into Breslin and getting a Sunday slot has been kind of a get in line, kind of put your reservation in and wait till it's your turn to get a Sunday opening. So what that has resulted is, and us looking at Saturdays and Saturdays having a lot of student events, and then having to make the decision between do we do it on a Saturday, knowing, I think in this case, we have three or four teams that would miss, uh, potentially more if they're in playoffs. Or do we look at a weeknight graduation where we're going to avoid those types of events, but may not be as, um, accessible for families that are driving in from out of town. So it's kind of like this. Uh, one or the other. So last year, as you recall, we brought that to the board and we did a successful, I think Wednesday, I think it was a Wednesday evening graduation at Breslin. And really we've had overwhelmingly positive feedback about the Breslin experience. Um, it's the timing of the Breslin experience that people have lots of feelings about of weekend or weeknight. Um, we have some people that don't like the Sundays either because of religious observance there. So Dr. Kemsley's core vision was to try to get as many students to attend as possible. And understood the impact of the weekly graduation that that, you know, causes on families. And he announced, um, that to allow time for planning for as many to attend as possible. Now, we recognize the board did set a schedule and attempted to place graduation on weekends. So, um, I have Dr. Kemsley kind of taking the pulse for, of feedback from families that he's heard at the high school, uh, with our hopes of eventually getting it back to a Sunday. So the reason I'm mentioning that is I want to make sure we didn't overstep our bounds with the board in terms of, um, it would be a Thursday evening graduation. Um, you know, the other option would be a Saturday afternoon graduation. And then, you know, it's going to be again, whatever, you know, that balance that we want to take. So, um, certainly opened a feedback from the board because we know we did bring that to the board before. And Dr. Kemsley and I talked about process to make sure we don't get ahead of the board and that. Um, so wanted to just put it out there for the board to see if there was any, um, if you had any strong thoughts or feelings about that, or if you want the administration to, um, be the ultimate, um, decider on whether it's that Thursday or the Saturday. Uh, right now we have announced it to families as being that Thursday, but, um, we understand some people are disappointed and upset because they would like it on a weekend instead. So we can talk about that. Uh, energy savings bond. The district, uh, should have an update on that non-voted energy savings bond we talked about months ago. Uh, our, um, bond team is working on a knock to exceed budget number and scope for that approach to the bond. Uh, since it's been such a long time, we will provide the board with a refresher as well as a community for what is that again? Because it's been, you know, four or six months since we talked about it. Um, so we'll get that scope and financials and another education session coming up along with the recommendation. Once we have an update. So we're waiting on the update and a timeline. Just want to again, get that on the radar that we talked about that non-voted energy savings bond. Um, and are actively doing that assessment still. Uh, we would like to schedule a offer of a walkthrough of the Chippewa construction site for board members. Uh, if our trustees are interested. And I was going to poll at the meeting this, this evening. So we know we often give you a bond update, but it'd be really nice to every now and then offer the opportunity for you to visit and walk through. So we've heard, we heard that feedback at our retreat and, um, showing, taking that feedback and put it into action. I'd like to poll in a moment and see if there are members that would be interested in doing that. Uh, again, we'd have to make sure we're not discussing the, the business of the district or it has to be posted as a board meeting, but helps you to connect with, uh, what you're voting on. We can actually see some of the work. So, um, I am proud to announce the launching of our new district website. So our communications team, especially Michaela Temple, working diligently on, on taking feedback, making sure it passes the, um, uh, accessibility, uh, standards and kind of making it a cleaner, um, fresher, um, look for the Okamis schools. Um, that was launched Friday afternoon. Um, I will be happy to bring up just the board portion of that website. So people can see it at home. So let me find it. Yeah. Yeah. Let's see if I can find that here. Thought I had it up. I really so much. That, so that's share Spain. Oh, there it is. Okay. So this is just the board tab. So whenever you get to the website right now, it's going to have this welcome. Uh, and this is the board tab. So you'll see very delightfully, we have a picture of our board members. We have, um, very easy to identify, um, links to click on. This also shows up while in your phone. Uh, but you can get to the agendas, the past meetings, you can get to the live broadcast by having to type in the Zoom link. Our past meetings are new policies are up there and who to contact. So it's, um, just a really nice, clean look. Um, as well as, um, some of the, um, work of the board here too, and, and easy, uh, some easy dropdowns. But what we're really focusing on, uh, in terms of the rebooted website is a district wide calendar. It's updated at the school level and district level. So people can see, uh, what is on, um, any school's calendar, but also, uh, district calendar events, in case you want to support something that's going on, uh, at the school level. And, um, Michaela did a great job. Um, Michaela Temple did a great job getting feedback on this, working with Shannon. Uh, and our comms team to get this out. Our next steps would be, um, looking at a, uh, app for your phone. That, um, would be a Okamis Public Schools app that would house the calendar and also, um, school newsletter. So that's, you know, in that email, you can't find what happened with that email. There's a PDF of it right there, the history of all the newsletters. So, uh, that we hope for a launch in twenty twenty-five. Um, once we work out, um, the rest of the, there's going to be some bugs and things to improve on the website. So kudos to our comms team for doing that work. That was no small effort from them.
A huge improvement, huge improvement.
Huge.
Uh, we have a, uh, student wellness series that we've been working on with the subcommittee of the board and Dr. Hoffman. We have a November nineteenth and January twenty-eighth dates, uh, two opportunities for our public to hear some experts to inform our community on, uh, stress management, um, sleep, importance of sleep, uh, impact of device, um, screen time on sleep. Um, impact of sleep on potentially athletics. Um, it's kind of a, a, a overall wellness series and we're hoping to have three events. We have a date for the first two. Um, and we will have, um, those dates held and we believe those are scheduled for Kenwa right now. And there should be some flyers coming out and some information coming out. So that's just kind of hot off the press from the, from our, um, sleep, um, sleep, sleep study talk over the past couple of years. The other thing, uh, we're doing to follow up is we're scheduling an informational session with other superintendents, athletic directors and boards, uh, in January twenty-third in the evening. We want you to mark your calendars for that. Where we want to again, tell our story on, um, how we analyzed, um, what the research said on sleep, what the barriers were for a district to be kind of a standalone approach in that, to try to build some conversation amongst other local, local districts and superintendents and athletic directors in terms of maybe a more countywide approach or getting a group of schools, maybe to see if there was interest in pursuing that. So again, direct follow-up from our, um, sleep time conversations. So if trustees would hold that January twenty-third date, uh, we'll work on an agenda, a formal agenda for that evening too. And I want to thank, uh, the trustees for working on that, uh, as well. So that's trustee Taylor Buffett and Kavanaugh, I believe. Correct? Yes, good. Um, some exciting news to share. Um, Brian Cremkow, um, is going to be, uh, appointed by me as the, uh, food service director of the Okamis Schools effective immediately. Uh, Brian had, as you recall, had the interim label as our food service director, uh, for the past three months almost. And, um, has earned the opportunity to be the full-time food service director. Brian, um, before being interim, also filled in while our former food service director was out on a medical leave. So he's had really an extended opportunity to have a on-the-job interview for months and months at a time. Uh, Brian in his approach has shown, uh, a really student-centric approach, uh, approach to make, um, the menus and offerings, uh, diverse and appealing to students, uh, as well as getting, you know, that third line up and running, which we hadn't had up and running since prior to COVID. Uh, and now is open at seven twelve or five twelve? The third line, is it open at Kenwa two yet? What? Here, yeah. Yeah, come on up here. Yep. So Brian's, um, has a Bachelor of Science in Food Systems, Economics and Management. He's a certified, uh, food safety manager, uh, as a member of the National Registry of Food Safety Professionals. He's got a facilities management certification and, um, line certification. I think that's a, a food service term. Yeah. Not sure what that is. Um, he, um, has been a facilities supervisor at Michigan State University in their, um, food service program as well as a dining services manager, uh, and an executive chef in his background. Um, so a lot of different experiences throughout MSU from, I think it goes back to two thousand, no, nineteen ninety-eight. Yes. Nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and twenty? Yep. Yep. Yes. Yep. So retired from that and then, um, his path took him to another part-time industry and then his love of food service brought him back to us. And, um, I will tell you, the food service employees love the culture that he's building amongst the employee group. Uh, often hard to fill positions that need to feel valued. And Brian has been, uh, steward and advocating for their working conditions, them feeling valued, their voice feeling valued in the process and um, still looking at different new exciting ways to do things to move us forward. Uh, he even brought to me some ideas for, um, recycling and compostable trays just in the last week. So uh, he understands the board, um, mission and vision in terms of how we're going to move food service forward with our community as well. So Brian, it's a pleasure to, um, appoint you as our food service director. And just wanted to give you a few moments to sure. Say hello.
I'm, I'm glad to be here. Um, I just wanted to let you, as far as, that the board know as far as my priorities were, you know, those long lines. Getting the kids the opportunities to get the meals, the free meals to get the kids to eat and not be in a hurried manner. So my stepping stones for this beginning of this year was to build a good core group of staff and then open up venues that have not been opened in several years because of staffing issues. So we weren't even meeting the capacity of what we were built for, for serving, which then creates lines. So last week we opened up the Grab and Go operations at both middle schools, which had not been open until pre-COVID. Now Grab and Go, we also have the opportunity to purchase some things, but it also, you can get a combo meal, which, which is free through there also. So that opens up some means to spread that through the high school. It now has um, as far as the third serving line open, which is called Around the World, which is kind of a specialty thing as far as that. We've getting a lot of rave reviews on that. So that's been opened and we've got, uh, the Grab and Go operation open up there. So everything we were built for now is up to capacity. Now, we got the staff to do that. We're doing that. So, you know, the basis that we were looking at was you know, okay, we've got to take some baby steps to get to some things, to get to some more, you know, scratch cooking better. You know, we're serving good food. We can do some better. Okay? Um, but we have to take steps to do that. So first thing is let's use everything that we have and see what we can do. So that's kind of been the approach. Um, so I, you know, I go out into the units twice a week. I'm, I'm, I'm making rounds. I'm saying hi to them. I'm checking with them, seeing what they need. You know, my big thing is they're the ones doing the work. So I want to support them, get them the tools they need, the foods that they need. Cause they're hearing the comments. You know? So forming that relationship and they know they can come to me. So that's kind of been my premise and how I'm looking at things. So I'm really excited to be here. It's a great opportunity, you know, after twenty-five years in retiring um, from MSU and then miraculously my wife starts to work from home after twenty years at Sparrow. Now, next thing, I'm back to full-time work. I don't know why that happens, but, but, uh, just, it just kind of enrolled in that. So that, that's kind of how things really transgressed, but, uh, it's, it's been a great opportunity, you know, uh, Dr. Hood is fine, John Hood has been fine as leader as far as working with me on things. Mario has been really transitioning with me as far as getting to know things and, and being really flexible and giving me some support and things. And so I'm really looking forward to this role. And, uh, just learning everything it entails and seeing what we can do to take to the food service where it's going to be a level of what we're going to do. Now I just want to speak about the, the, um, compostable recyclable stuff real quick. I don't know. Did the board get to see the letter that was?
Yeah, we'll bring you back for a form, more formal presentation.
Oh, on that. Okay, we'll do that. So yes, so we got some plans in progress because I know that had been a priority from the board with Emily. Um, things didn't quite work out financially to do some of that. But there's other steps that we can do that'll minimize that, those finances. That it's going to take us at least a level or two above where we are now. So so addressing those concerns with the community and with the students. So all right. No problem. Any questions for me? All right.
Congratulations on your new role.
Thank you, thank you.
With that, any questions or comments from the trustees?
Okay. I just have one about the graduation.
Yeah.
Moving it. I, I'm curious, when the decision was made, was there any conversation? About surveying the high school families first? To have, how many people would prefer we leave it on the weekend? How many people would be happier if we move it to a weekday? Just so we're getting the actual voice of the people being affected.
I don't, I don't believe that happened.
I feel like that would give us, because, I mean, we can say yes, you would think this was better, but. I feel like the high school families are the ones who should be asked, rather than this.
Yeah.
Just my. Meaning we've always had it. I would assume, have there always been these conflicts with athletics, or is it because we've moved the graduation?
Moving it from a Saturday, Sunday to a Saturday causes the conflict.
Because did we move it, push it back into May to, it used to be later in June?
It did used to be later in June, but if Saturday, like. Saturday is a, is a. Competitive day, but Sunday's not very much a city, so. Fact that we can't get into Breslin on a Sunday yet is what's causing the issue.
And we're married to Breslin? I mean, are there options?
Um.
For this year, clearly this is.
We've gotten overwhelmingly positive feedback about being in Breslin, because if we bring it back to our site, we deal with weather, it limits the number of tickets. Whereas if anyone can come, it's accessible, really comfortable with bathrooms, air-conditioned. Screamed in a nice way, so we would really like to keep the Breslin peace. The question is the timing.
I'm also really excited about our community and doing more sports again and media activities. It seems to be pretty robust. It's exciting.
I support President Gibar's data-driven approach to figuring out graduation, this is one thing. And then I'm also definitely would like to be, do the tour.
Well, yeah.
Oh, great.
Yeah. Find us all.
And I'll speak in behalf of trustee Phelps and.
We'll bring our hard hats.
Yeah, yeah, we have.
So I'll talk to Dr. Kenzie about some data, hopefully that.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I know they've made a decision. I just. I would just think it would be proactive and maybe moving forward.
Yeah, sounds good.
And, and I think with that, if, if we take that data-driven approach, the board. As a board member, I would be very comfortable with the administration just making that determination. As opposed to bringing it back to the board.
Exactly, because it speaks for itself.
Exactly.
We don't need to be involved.
Yeah.
And with our trustees.
Yeah, definitely support.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate the feedback. Oh, I did forget a very important thing at the end there.
I have reflected upon the feedback from the board in terms of coverage while I. I didn't scroll down far enough on my list, sorry. While I am out for a medical issue in November. And Assistant Superintendent Bailey will be covering for me starting November fourth. We reflected on the thoughtful feedback from the board in terms of intimate knowledge of the district, the strategic plans focus. On building organizational capacity and that specifically is giving people within the organization different leadership opportunities. So I am moving forward with helping prepare Assistant Superintendent Bailey, who I have. The utmost confidence in doing a wonderful job with that. And then we will trickle that down to giving others opportunities in the organization to step up for that month to, to learn and show some leadership. Which overall strengthens the organization. So really good reflection and pushback by our trustees with me, and I just appreciate that. Helping me kind of find my focus and just want to let you know that will be the plan moving forward.
We like that.
Yeah, sorry about the, didn't scroll down.
There's no other questions, then we can move on to board reports and requests. And I don't have any correspondence to acknowledge since our last meeting.
Myself to use the restroom.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead. So I will open up the table to any board members who have anything they would like to report on since our last meeting. Any requests that need to be made.
I'll just share out the feedback we got on the retreat. It was rich source of data. First of all, the retreat itself. I just want to kind of thank my colleagues on the board here for engaging in that conversation. It felt generative. We'll get better at that process. It was, you know, there was time spent on some things we probably didn't spend time on, but as a first retreat. As I said that day, I thought it was fantastic. The feedback, people also found it valuable across the board. That was kind of a takeaway. And then lots of good ideas for making it better and more helpful. So I won't go through all of them, but from timing to process to whatnot. So I just want to thank people for both participating and also again providing great feedback for moving forward. Coming out of that, you know, the executive team, I don't know if you've had a chance to meet yet. I know it's been scheduling as a challenge, but like that was such an important. Way of doing business. To me, it kind of breathes life into our mission statement of, you know, together we, we do the work, and this is a way of doing that. So, so kudos for that, kind of just to get you to getting to that place where, where that seems like a way to move forward. The other thing that, and I'd like Superintendent Hood to be, to hear this, but it's just the strategic planning. Conversation that we kind of started and the, and the timing of that, and just feel like that's something I want to make sure that we are continuing to discuss. Because I, I know if we, if even the process that was done before, it's a huge one. So, you know, I think the conversation about, you know, other ways to do that. That help us be more strategic. Really, it created a document that might not have everything in it, but it actually helps us be more strategic as an organization.
I can tell you that different members have been emailing with. MASB about the facilitation process that they have that we learned about at the retreat. Just to get more information and how that would work. I don't think much has come of it as of yet, but I know that's a conversation that's been. Be sure to have some information for our students. I know that he had some sort of dialogue already about it, and I know that they have concerns about the. So this would be a nice avenue to take where I was looking to.
Something I talked to Superintendent about briefly, but it's, it's a real question, but which would look our, our kind of intention, which is that. You know, the strategic plan is, is we have three to five-year document, right? That's supposed to, and this, and that's kind of our timeframe also. Looking at the district, what do we need in the next five years? And so, and not more just as, as a. Desire to have conversation about this, about whether the board might play a kind of role that it has historically. In developing the strategic plan for the district, given the timeframe is kind of our responsibility as trustees. And now, or if that's a future agenda item, but. Seems like a good thing to talk about.
That you had.
And an email initiated a conversation with MASB about facilitating a strategic plan. I didn't know if you had any follow-up information yet, but.
No, I did hear from MASB right after the retreat. And followed up asking for a proposal, and I haven't received one yet. So then I followed up again this week to say, just to get a reminder on their plate. So happy to bring back a proposal. Would, as we talked at the retreat, appreciate the collaboration. So it's not a superintendent's approach to the strategic plan. But it's a collaborative approach between the board and the superintendent in terms of the strategic plan. So if there are any trustees that would want to. Help vet that and bring it back to the larger board, I would certainly welcome that opportunity as well.
I'd be happy to, but I won't be.
We can open it up for other board members.
Yeah, let's do that.
Let them have the opportunity to.
I found that approach has been working well, just trying to have a trustee or two to help and bring the best things forward and work productive when we do brand discussion here.
Any other board reports or requests?
Moving on then, we will have our action items. Within the action items, there is a consent agenda. Is it the will of any board member to remove or edit any of those items within the consent agenda? Seeing none, then I will ask for a motion, please.
Move that the board approve items one through three for immediate implementation and appropriate action. Item one, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four. And item two, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four. And item three, acknowledge receipt for September financial statement and approve payments, payment bills for September.
Moved by trustee Kavanaugh, supported by trustee Doxy. All those in favor respond by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, nay. And the ayes have it.
Next, we have the board policy final reading. Can I have a motion, please?
Moves that the board waive the reading and adopt final reading of board policies thirty-one fifteen, non-discrimination and retaliation. Thirty-one fifteen A, definitions, thirty-one fifteen B, designation of coordinators. Thirty-one fifteen C, supportive measures, thirty-one fifteen D. Informal resolution thirty-one fifteen E, grievance procedure and remedies thirty-one fifteen F. Complaint dismissal and appeals thirty-one fifteen G, additional requirements to prevent and address pregnancy. Discrimination thirty-one fifteen H, training requirements, record-keeping and policy notice. Thirty-one eighteen, non-discrim, non-discrimination covenant and contracts with the district. Forty-one oh five B, religious workplace accommodations for employees and applicants. Forty-two twenty-nine, acceptable use of generative artificial intelligence. Fifty-two oh two, unlawful discrimination, harassment and retaliation against students. Fifty-two oh six, student discipline, fifty-two oh six B, student discipline. Students with disabilities fifty-two oh six D, student discipline. Enrollment following misconduct at another public or non-public school. Fifty-two oh eight oh one, acceptable use of generative artificial intelligence. And fifty-seven fifteen, student oral health assessment.
By trustee Doxy, supported by trustee Kavanaugh. These were all posted on the website since our last meeting. For the public and we need to review. Do we have any questions or concerns by board members with this one?
Were there any? From public community members? Okay.
Just because there are so many policies, I would like to do a roll call for these. Trustee, what would you say?
Yes.
Thank you.
Trustee Doxson.
Yes.
Trustee Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Trustee Gibar.
Yeah.
Trustee Lynn.
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well.
And a motion passes. Up next, we have our audit report. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the board accept the audit report of Manor and Custerian PC for the twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-four. School year.
Support. Move right to us, you then, supported by trustee Doxy. And we heard from our representative at our last meeting. We were able to review that report. Asked questions at that time. It was an outstanding report.
No findings, outstanding report over ninety-nine point one percent of every dollar accounted for, and our variance was in the top of itself.
With come to, there should be. From her executive director. Thank you, Liz. All those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And the motion passes. Up next, we have our superintendent evaluation cycle. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the board evaluate the superintendent on an annual basis from July through June. Support.
By trustee Kavanaugh, supported by trustee Buffett. And this is again something that we discussed at our retreat and at several different meetings now, just to formalize. That we are adopting the new district's fiscal year to align with. Fiscal year and all the other district employees for our superintendent's evaluation. All those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And the motion passes. Up next, we have discussion items, the first and only one being the board book study. I will turn it over to trustee Kavanaugh, who gave us our questions for this chapter.
So. First of all, again, like the split lunch that I survived, I would like to say. This group of students he's writing about, all of us in the nineties, we all turned out okay, contrary to what I think. They thought we are gonna be like, I really appreciate that one. Quote of a teacher, it really sounded like the beginning of like. A rock video, like complaining old person, and then the kids. It was, I don't know, this, this chapter kind of hit me up like, we're not, that's terrible. He threw us okay. But anyway. I thought this chapter was interesting, looking at the capacity of the whole organization. And I know that we're probably reading this book differently than John would be, or teachers would be since, you know, we're looking at it with a board perspective and. Organizational capacity seems more like something that we would be involved with compared to some of the other chapters that we have read. So. I wanted to ask you all, what were some of the big changes that we have aboard have made that you think of as you're reading? It's like, for me, there's always one or two of our big decisions that I have in mind as I'm reading through these. I'm just curious. What the rest of you thought, or what you think of?
This isn't so much our decision, but what I thought of when reading this. Was actually the work that is in process around surveying stakeholders. Because, and both because this is obviously very dated, but also like, wow, there's six elements of. Occupations, right? Like those could kind of help guide some of our questions. And so. I, I like, like, well, the thing I wrote down in the front of the chapters. What do staff want in terms of a professional culture? I don't know the, I mean, I know what I, I have my own opinion, sure, superintendent has his, and we all have our own, but I'd love to. Hear what staff would like. That's just an example of how I think this can inform some of our work.
Yeah, for sure. I mean. So much of it, the politics, you know, we talk about politics, and we talk about. Trust. So much of it, I think, would be informed by, we would get some good information from surveying different stakeholders. For sure. I tend to think about the big changes that we made mascot was one that, that I thought about. And that involved a lot of trust. And a lot of communicating with stakeholders. And then COVID, of course, which is a full different kind of force to make change. The idea of needing, basically needing buy-in before you can make change. That's something that we've worked on, especially the mascot, and then I. Compare it to COVID where. We just had to make change, whether or not there was buying or not, and that was some difficult. You know, some difficult times for us. And partly because it was just. That brought up everything. That brought up trust. That brought up politics. That brought up literal politics. So that's the other one I think of a lot from reading this book.
I think that buy-in piece though goes to what we continue to talk about together, right? We be doing things together with our community, with our, our staff, and it's important that. We, as much as possible, seek to have that.
If I may add to that, I think that the focus on. Sharing our why is really important, because you were right during COVID. We didn't necessarily, it wasn't buy-in necessarily. It was, well, we can tell you our why. That there were, you know, laws that were being made, you know, and that we needed to adhere to. But we also needed to, there were, were some decisions that required that we were going to. Were going to make our choice about how Okamas was going to um respond. And sharing our why, I think about some of the, you know, the athletic related with adjacent to COVID. Uh decisions and being very intentional about sharing our whys is really helps with. Uh from a from a change adoption standpoint.
I think it also helps people feel that. You're doing these changes for these reasons, but you're doing them with them, not to them. You know, and when you have the buy in, because everyone understands the why, then it's a. We're doing this together. No one's having it done to them, even if. It isn't what we wanted. It this is why and this is how.
Even if it is being done to all of us. You understand why we are responding the way we're responding. So I agree with that. Yes.
I think that goes with the the idea that there needs to be consensus, that problem actually exists, the problem that we want to change. And so. You know, I think that we got to the point mostly with mascot, that there was consensus that we needed to change. Not everybody was, you know, definitely outliers. Um but then I think about, um you know, we talk about start change or start, school start time changing. You know, that. Does everybody agree that this is the problem? That's the one I think a lot about this too, that is there consensus that there's a problem that needs to be solved? Or are people thinking that we're just. Creating an additional issue that, you know, that's going to impact people. So again, surveying stakeholders will help us with some of that as well.
And a lot of other pieces we have, you know, like the community forum idea is another opportunity to learn from folks. I mean, even something like the graduation date, right? It's there's a some data that we're using. I think getting clear about the when and why and some of our other retreat conversation about having some systematic kind of check ins. And some schedule, for example, like a facilities report, right? That's just, that's being systematic like, oh. We can expect that, for example, in January every year, whenever we decide it is. That's again, being a systematic approach to understanding what is, so that then when actions are taken by. You, by us, then there's a clear rationale for it.
And I think when you set expectations for anyone, whether they agree with the information they're given. It's much easier to take when you're expecting it. When you know, okay, that's coming in January. I'm not sure what it's gonna say, but I'm at least prepared to know that that's coming. And they can rely on that and anticipate it. And also the discussion to follow and the outcome, but just being able to anticipate those things in a systematic way. I think helps people adapt. Or at least anticipate that need to adapt, you know, and it's not such a surprise or hey, guess what? We just found the belt. Now we have to do that. We're not in a situation like that all the time. And I think being able to forecast. Really helpful.
So trustee Kavanaugh, you asked about uh. Items that or decisions that we have made and I'm I'm thinking actually of something that you've reported just tonight. Uh superintendenthood uh about extending to our expanded community. Um about the sleep times and uh the, you know, later start times. So expanding that opportunity to others in our expanded community, I think, is helping not only our community. But the broader to community to appreciate the why of our thought process. And it may may not result in anything, or it may result in anything, but at least it's the opportunity to uh share our why. Um so I I think that that's a a great approach, I do. And consistent with uh managing change.
Um one of the other things that I had asked about was our district's level of stress, you know, that they talk about. Different things that are creating stress, but um. You know, the demands that we're asking of our of our um community members and our our staff and our students, our admin. Versus their capacity to handle it. And I'm just, you know, I wonder, our answers are probably getting different than John's answers, teachers' answers and our students. And I just. You know, what do we think? Do we know our levels of stress, John? You probably have a better handle on it than the rest.
I believe I do, but again, this is gonna be where that pen and eraser tool is gonna play a really nice approach. Uh again, our first launch is gonna be here in the next, you know. Month or less than a month with our um students. To get some feedback from that. And then we have a staff piece and uh no parent caregiver piece. And uh. I wanna see what that data is telling us. I know my anecdotal from walking through, talking to teachers. Talking to staff members, I believe the stress level is uh significant, especially post COVID. And not just here, um just in talking to my colleagues, but. That baseline of data. And then we can look at what strategies we're gonna put in place and then measure those and see if we see that baseline moving. It'll get better or worse in our approach. So I think there's a real uh intentionality of this board and administration to. Put a process to that, a system to it. So it's not just based on presumptions or feelings, it's based on.
Yeah. The other thing that I kind of. Was reflecting on in this um chapter, talking a lot about pushback of schools back way back in the days in early nineties about. Uh schools having to do so much more for the students. They're not just educating the students, but you know, and I started thinking like, this has gotta be way more. Now.
It is.
But isn't it more, do you think it's just more built into the job and into the structure? It's been there for so long that now we're, you know, used to doing mental health, used to do.
So I I would say I agree with all that. Um I don't know that we're. Used to it. We can only do so many things to do it well. And it seems like the schools are the caboose of all, like we're the last one people look to to try to address all the societal issues because we're we exist. And yes, we have some responsibility to do that, but again, our primary focus is teaching and learning and having positive outcomes. For kids, but when you look at the list of all the expectations that our teachers and administrators are required to do and all the time we spend on those things that. Aren't necessarily academic, but have some relation to academics. It's. It's a very, very heavy lift for any teacher or any staff member across, I would say the U S is working on the public school system. Um the jobs are very different than they were thirty, even thirty years ago.
Yes, for sure.
I can say even. Just in academic, the shift that we saw from an inclusion perspective. Took a huge impact on our teachers. You know, when I was a measly little grad student, asking teachers, you know, how are they dealing with this inclusion of, you know, children that have special needs? Into this, you know, format of everybody's in the same classroom now and one teacher has to accommodate everybody's needs. They had no training. That's all I heard. Yes, now we have to do this and no one's ever shown me how. I have no training in special education. I took one class, you know, and now they're becoming. Teachers of universal accommodation, right? Now it's even more. And we're we're saying, do something different for every single child, regardless of their ability. You know, if they if they are, you know, having a bad day, accommodate that, like it gets to be at that level, I feel like sometimes and. That's a huge load that is academic related, right? And we're still. Expecting positive response. And we're we're expecting, yes, I'm happy to be here and keep doing my job, even though literally every single day gets hard. Every single day, the need gets greater and the demands are are insurmountable sometimes, you know? And I I I think, well, how do we give that sense of support or or that feeling of you're gonna have a minute to catch up? Or I don't know that it's coming. I don't, I don't see that. Capacity increasing because the burden is also increasing. I don't know.
I think it would be instructive for us to learn, like you said, oh, I have to do all these things and. Debar you're just doing the same thing. And I believe that.
Yeah.
And, you know, some of the things that I'm holding on to and. Joe educator and Okamas, actually, we're not officially, we're not doing anymore, but I'm still doing.
Sure.
So I just like, like, what is the the weight? What are the pain points? What is the inventory of things that? Our staff is feeling responsible for. And I I feel like that is kind of like, if that could be put it together in some way. So useful for our work, because I think we should be in the business of figuring out what can we not do and being official about that and taking away some things. I don't know what that looks like. I don't have a picture of that in my head, but it's something that would give us a sense of the weight that people feel.
Or providing support in.
Supporting our students, we have to support our educators so they can support our students. And so um. Yeah, my thought is, I I don't know, again, some type of survey, but like you said, what are those stressors and? Are they self imposed or are they, right, something that we have um?
Yeah, and again, I don't mean self imposed. I guess I mean, like, it could have been three principles ago. But that's actually not a charge, you know, and again.
I had the opportunity to speak to a M S U class a couple of weeks ago. And this idea of like school initiatives and what, you know, what are teachers and schools dealing with and universal accommodations? It was fascinating to see and hear the questions from this next generation of educators coming up and. That them um interacting with me and getting some of the dose of. What is it? What is it like? And, you know, I'm coming into Mokamand and there's this persona of, you know, Okamess, you're Okamess. And I'm talking about some of the struggles we have with behaviors and the struggles we have with. Um meeting students' needs, our teachers are working their tails off to do every single day. You could see the eyes. And um. Yes, and. At at the end of that experience, now that hand raised and said, you know, why do they ask, why do you think people go in? Like, why did you go into education with all these challenges? You know, and and it's um. Our our staff goes in because they're the passion for kids. They believe in this. I got philosophical in this experiment of public education in the United States, being one of the great. Equalizing factors in our democracy of providing a free, appropriate public education for everyone. That there's no place to send other kids to, that we take every kid, we know where they're at and help them grow. And um it was interesting to see some agreement and disagreement with that, even within the the younger educators coming up. So.
It's agreement.
Well, it's tough when you see some of the, you know, there are, there is the day when you wanna, you know, throw your arm up and go like, oh, this is a tough day. Did someone else solve all those problems, you know? Our educators are amazing. And educators, I think, are correct, not just Okamess, I think. Public educators everywhere, certainly biased to that approach.
My oldest daughter is a uh has gone back to the classroom from being an administrator. And um I I talk to her almost daily. And so hearing, she's on, she's a millennial, so she's not. One of these high school uh high or college students, but I can see very clearly how. People, someone could say. How can that be done? You know, we're not asked at work to do everything for everyone at all times. We prioritize. And so that that's what we are actually asking is a tantamount. I mean, it's it's Herculean ask for a a s- a teacher in the classroom to do. To be everything and for all students and meet all the students where they need to be. I mean, our ask almost seems like, are you really serious? So I can actually see how someone could say, can I really do that? Is that, can it be done? Uh so I I just think um being realistic about. Um what our situation actually is. And now I'm actually reflecting on your statement about. What what are our educators actually experiencing? And what is their actual reality? So hopefully we could meet them where they are. In terms of their particular needs, so.
And we'll tie that survey back data to the policy and budgeting process for the boards. You can look at what is the reality? Do we wanna? How does that inform the decision making from the boards? You can make an educated decision about how we meet those needs.
Think that's very important.
Because who better to tell us? And how else will we find out?
You know, one one last, my last talking stick, I promise um on the uh initiative overload. Um so one of the authors quoted the beginning was actually on my dissertation committee and he had this phrase. Which said, you walk into any any school in the country. And you'll see the congealed residue of previous reform efforts. Just think about that that image. And it's true, it's true. I mean, yeah, so you can get out the bleach and you know, do some cleaning of.
I'm sure that aligns.
You have to have a shared reality back to this, uh make some of those decisions. Thank you, trustee Kavanaugh.
Yeah.
Next up, trustee Taylor, uh and the next chapter for us for October twenty eighth.
I'm sure she's aware.
Yes.
We'll remind her though. Um at this time in the meeting, citizens have an opportunity to address the board regarding any items of interest. Individual comments at this time will be limited to three minutes, but may be extended at the discretion of the board president. Do we have any blue cards?
We do not.
Do we have any online speakers? Do we have any other matters we need to address? And away, and we are adjourned at eight thirty four.